Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Gray Town Council regular meeting of August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We ran a little long on our workshop that began at six o'clock, so apologies for beginning ten minutes late. This meeting's being held in person and online, as is our normal custom. And I will begin with roll call. Counselor Height?
Here.
Counselor Meany?
Present.
Counselor McGuire?
Present.
Counselor Gask?
Present.
And I am Counselor Chapel, and to my right is Town Manager Nate Rudy. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is a consent agenda to approve several meeting minutes. I know I have a couple edits, do others have edits we need to pull out?
Which, which meeting do you want?
I have both June twentieth edits for June twentieth and July eighteenth.
Okay.
So Josh, you have edits for both?
Yes, though not the executive session, so we could leave that in.
Yep.
Okay, so we are only voting as part of the consent agenda minutes from the executive session on July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
On second.
Anne?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Does anyone have any edits for the meeting on June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, besides me?
Hang on, yes, I think that is the one I have. Um, yes, on packet page six. The format of this one was a little different from the others, too, but at the bottom, for the motion for the liaison assignments, I felt like they should be listed in the minutes. And then further on, on packet page seven, the town manager's expenditure limits, I think we should list the limits in the minutes, and those were the two. Ideally, I'd like to see for the motion on the fees, a link to the website for the fees. I don't think we need to list pages and pages of fees, but I think that these were just a little too sparse for me. Those were my only requested changes.
Thank you, Dan. Does anyone else have edits? Okay, I'll go over mine. Packet page six, under the motion for council rules, it says that we passed that four zero, but I believe we tabled it.
Oh, very good catch. Which, which one?
Um, six, so motion.
Oh, the schedule.
Yeah, eight point, eight point six. For county, town council, not the schedule, sorry, town council rules.
Yep.
Eight point five, not eight point six, sorry.
Get to practice your Roman.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so that should be tabled, not passed.
Yeah, we're not, or reaffirms, right.
Packet page eight, under committee reports, under the section with my information. It looks like some stuff got cut and paste from a separate minutes report, which, I mean, that makes sense, people are doing that. But the section under the ordinance advisory committee, meeting June fifteenth, twenty-three, it should delete this, the content from and discussed reduced depth through the words master plan and visions. That, that whole sentence was not relevant to what we talked about. We did discuss the growth overlay district, as noted there. But then, under the second bullet, where it talks about GP COG, there's more information here that actually belongs up in the OAC content, so the.
Would you mind just sending?
Yeah, I can send this, yeah. So anyway, there's edits to this, I can, it's a little confusing, so I won't. I'll just email it, as you said. It's basically edits to the ordinance advisory committee and GP COG content. That's all I had for that. Those minutes on June twentieth. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes as amended. We will send any edits to town staff for June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
Anne?
I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't present at either of those two meetings.
That makes sense. Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Did anyone besides me have edits for July eighteenth meeting minutes?
I do, but I think you might have the same ones, so go ahead.
Yeah, my, it was on packet page fourteen, where we were voting on the Woodcock Drive addition to the winter maintenance easements. The way we've listed out, it was sort of an odd series of events where we voted it down, then we reconsidered it, and then it passed, but the, the way it's ordered here doesn't reflect that. There's a passed motion, then a passed one that actually was the fail motion, so it's one to three, but it should say failed. And then a reconsidered vote, which did pass for, I believe, four oh. So those need to be. I think the first one that says pass should just be removed. Then it should fail, and then it should be reconsidered with a pass.
So the first, the first motion there failed. The second motion was to reconsider the motion, that passed. And then the third motion on page fifteen, to reconsider the exact same motion that was done the first time, passed.
Oh, right, okay, so yes.
But, but the, the pa, the annotation that it passed in the first one is incorrect. It was a one to three vote and it failed.
Right.
In the second vote, it passed four oh.
As a reconsideration.
As a reconsideration.
Yes.
And then in the third vote, it passed four oh.
Yes.
The original motion was reconsidered.
Yeah, that makes, yeah, you got it, that's right. Okay, and then packet page fifteen.
Is that how you remember it, or no?
No? Oh, go ahead.
Well, I thought I voted against it in the end, but I would have to go back, to be honest with you, and look at the tape.
I think in the end you voted for it. And I think.
If that's what you had in your notes, I'll go with that.
I'll have to go back to my notes.
I trust your notes more than my memory.
Okay, we'll also watch the video.
My recollection is you voted for it.
I thought you did.
The second time.
The second time.
Was that the same one you had, Dan?
No, actually, I did have a different one.
Okay, let me just, I have one more, and then I'll, I think, maybe two more. Under, uh, report from the town manager on packet page fifteen, it references, I think it was packet page fifteen, yes. It says something where I said there was no, I asked if there was no progress with the monument, and I, I honestly don't know what that is.
We were talking about a conversation about moving, like, that piece of land, working with the DOT on whether we could rearrange the, the road intersection, and whether that would require moving the monument. And we, we haven't gotten anywhere in the discussion with the DOT.
Okay, I don't remember saying that, but if I did, then that's fine, you can leave it in.
I get that one, too.
That's fine, just leave it in if, if that's the record that was annotated, I just might not recall. Packet page sixteen, under my correspondence, it lists an individual named Chris Holmes that reached out to me for a moring ordinance, but that's actually Kristy Hol- Holmes, not holes. So I can send that as an edit. That was all I had, but Dan, you had a couple others?
Yeah, starting on packet page sixteen, and I can send you these too, Nate.
Yes.
Let me make it easy. Under council correspondence, where I was talking about my attendance at the association, the Acre's Road Association meeting. It says on the second line, statutory road association, which gives them the authority to do things, and I just thought that was, the to do things is.
Kind of liked it.
Um, is, is, I would just strike that. On packet page, I'll go backwards, back up, package page fifteen, under report from the town manager, it says Counsel McGuire asks for clarification. Can we write out the acronym, the, the acronyms, BGTE and BETR? And then I asked about, I'm not quite sure, foundation inspections, but I asked about residential permits, so I'll send you that edit.
Okay, yeah.
For that one. On packet page eleven, where adjustments to the agenda, it says the order, Chair Chapel proposed a motion, but in the box, it, it says the motion was made by Matthew. So I.
This is page eleven.
Top of the page.
Top of the page. This was a motion from you.
Ordered, yep.
And then, maybe we got those backwards.
So.
All right, I'll check the notes.
And then I think we need to, in the minutes, we need to find out the, the exact name of the award that Mary got. It says sentiment, but I think it's a legislative sentiment.
Legislative sentiment.
And I, I think we should make sure we get that correct and, and complete. That was, that was, those were my only changes. And I'll get you those other key ones.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the town council meeting on July eighteen, two thousand and twenty-three, as amended?
So moved. Second?
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Anne?
Abstained because I wasn't present at that meeting.
And I'm a yes. All right, next up is public comments on non-agenda items, limit three minutes per person. Comments are intended for information sharing, not discussion. Comments in excess of three minutes are welcome at the end of the agenda prior to adjournment. There is no one in chambers here, so there will be no one speaking, and I don't believe anyone's online from the public.
Doesn't look like it.
So I will close the public comment at seven twenty-one PM. Does anyone have any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
No.
Next up are presentations from two summer interns to the town, Abigail Davis and Hope Carroll. Are they online, or are they?
Kyle tells me that Abby is here, and he is going to give Hope's presentation.
Oh, okay.
Because Hope is remote in Bangor area.
Good evening.
Hello, counsel, just one second while this pops up. Okay. Hello, so Kyle Hediniac, the town's digital media coordinator, and I'm also lucky enough to be the internship coordinator for whenever we have interns. This summer, we had two, one of whom is here tonight, the other is not. So for the one who is not here, I will be telling you about her work, that she did with us over the summer. So Hope Carroll interned with us this summer, she's from the University of Maine, up in Orano. And before you feel bad about her commute to Gray, don't worry, she worked remotely, which worked out really well. I'm really thankful we have the ability to have people work remotely for us, because otherwise, we wouldn't have had Hope, and she ended up doing a lot of great work for us, so that, that's fantastic. Hope comes to us from the Margaret Chase Smith Policy Center's main government summer internship program, the Mouthful. It is a great program. Last year, we had an intern, Abby, who came from that program, and now Hope came to us courtesy of that program as well. And her, Hope's undergraduate major and minor is communications and marketing and new media. So certainly someone that I like talking to about her education, because that was, that was very close to mine as well when I was at UMaine. And her skill set really fit in with us well here, so I was really thankful that we were able to get her onboard. So what you're looking at right now is what we're calling the Welcome Trifold. So this is a, this is a graphic design prog, uh, project, meant to be folded three times, to be sent to new residents in Gray, as like, oh, hey, welcome to the neighborhood, kind of thing. And designing something like this would take a lot of time, say, if I had to do it, like, a lot of things would have been neglected if I had to do this. But luckily, Hope was here with us, and she had motivation and the skill set to help design this. So you're looking at one side of it, and here is the other side. So I was really thankful for Hope's help fitting this information on the trifold, it is still a work in progress, but it's very close to the finish line, and when it does get to the finish line, we will be able to start sending this out to residents, and hopefully give them a nice start when they come to town. I'm also thankful Hope was able to learn particular software to help us make this, along with her other projects, because one of the things that's most important to us is making sure our interns have a great experience, and have them not just do busy work, right? So we had them do important work, at least I think so. And Hope was able to learn how to use industry standard programs like Adobe InDesign, for example, to make something like this. So that's all to say, look forward to having stuff like this sent out to new town residents, and we'll have Hope largely to thank for that. If you pay attention to the town's Facebook page, you might also have seen some graphics that look like this pop up every week. We started doing this, this summer, and this was a result of Hope and I tossing ideas back on, back and forth on how to give residents and anybody who follows us on Facebook, a good sense of what's coming up for a particular week. So this is a graphic we've been posting on Mondays, Monday mornings. And it's, I think, a great snapshot of what's going to happen in terms of meetings, and some events when they do pop up during the week. And anybody who wants to learn more about these events that they see on this graphic, they can go to our website, as noted at the bottom. And we also give them a little hint that we are also on YouTube, which is something I'm trying to promote as much as I can. So thank you to Hope for doing this every week. Some other things Hope has worked on with us, so I heard you folks talking about a mailer for budget information and a community news survey, we did mock up a design for that. We've been thinking about this for a while, and so this is totally just a proof of concept, but on the right there, you have a postcard design that we could use if we wanted to, that promotes both our resident or our community feedback survey, as well as information about the proposed budget. So something we have in our back pocket, should we ever want to employ it or something like it. And we do have the QR codes, like I know you, you folks were talking about. So not only did Hope design the postcard, but she also largely helped create the survey we might eventually use. And that's, it, it sounds like it could be an easy process to create a survey like that, but it's really something that needs to be measured and thought out really well. We want to collect the data we want to collect, and to be able to get it on the backend when we collect all these responses in a way that's easily discernible and analytical. So Hope, she tackled that with us, and I'm thankful she did, because that's a huge project, and hopefully we will use it in the near future. This next image you see here is something that I'm really thankful for the help on. So if you have passed by the clerk's office recently, or you have seen this online perhaps, we just finalized and published what we're calling the Town of Gray Older Adult Resource Guide, which is a comprehensive guide for senior citizens, and it just contains a lot of resources they may find useful. And we're careful to note that the Town of Gray does not endorse all of these services we list in this pamphlet, but rather, we just put out the information for awareness sake. And I gotta say, I've been really warmed by the response to this. I know we've run out of copies in the town, in the clerk's office twice now, we need to put more out there, and the response online has been great as well. So this project has been well received, and is for a great cause. Hope has done some other graphic design projects for us, as you can tell, that's one for skill sets. So on the left-hand side, you have an example of some of the thumbnails I've been using for our meeting uploads to YouTube. So we try to keep it as organized as possible on YouTube. If you want to go to our YouTube channel and check out all of the town council meetings, you can do that easily via a playlist on YouTube, and we have that for town council meetings, planning board meetings, zoning board appeals, and select school board meetings. So on the bottom left there is the thumbnail one we'll see for the playlist for planning board. So we like to think that keeps it nice and organized, and it looks pretty professional. We're not just throwing videos up on YouTube and leaving it to chance what people might see as the thumbnail. We keep it organized in that way, so thank you to Hope for doing that. And then on the right here, you have a design from Hope about Innovative Species Walk that happened earlier in July. And that was posted in the library, and I think here as well, in the town office, just to raise awareness for this event. Stuff like that is really important to still get, you know, physical flyers out, and she was able to help with that as well. And besides those projects, Hope was kept busy doing some research. There are things that I would love to look more into, whether it be new equipment, or best practices, or guidelines for particular areas of my job. But sometimes it got, gets fun on the back burner, but Hope was here this summer to help me research things like external microphones for employees to use. Or what's the best graphic design software to use, be it Publisher, or PowerPoint, or InDesign. She took a look at all of that, not an easy task. The thumbnails I mentioned before, she helped us do, she really helped do research about town, town office hours in the area around Gray, just to see how we compare, and that was a project we worked on. And she also helped with budget communication in the lead up to the election. So this was all not just fluff, right, it was, it was useful things that Hope was able to do for us. I know that's a lot to cover, do you have any questions about what you've seen? I know Hope, so just one last note, Hope had only good things to say about her time with Gray. We have interns do a survey at the end of it, and the only thing she critiqued us on was that she could have done more.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that speaks to her, her motivation.
Yeah, I, I just would like to say a big thank you. I have als, I did check out the adult, older adult resource guide, and it's really extensive and I think very useful. I'm glad to hear people are making use of it.
They certainly are.
Yeah.
A lot of credit for that, that also goes to our previous intern last summer, Abby Cludier.
Oh, okay.
Credit where credit is due.
Yeah. Anyone else have?
No, just to second your thank you, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, very good, thank you.
Yeah, she clearly did some great work. I wish we had known that she had more, more capacity to do this, though.
I know. Well, one of the things that helped was that we had two interns this summer, so we were able to divide some of the work, which Abby will talk about right now, unless you folks have any other things for me.
Thank you, Hope.
Great.
I don't suppose Hope, and it has any hours left in her internship?
I know.
All right, well, good evening, counsel, my name is Abby Davis, and I'm a current student in the Policy Planning and Management Program at the Muskee Institute through USM, studying public policy, public and nonprofit management. And tonight, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what my time in Gray has been like as an intern. One of the very first tasks I was kind of put up with when I came on was I was asked to digitalize copies of each department's yearly workflow charts. And so what each department was asked to do is to write down their yearly tasks, monthly tasks, the overarching kind of trends seasonally that they work on throughout their time here. And the idea for me was to digitalize it to provide more consistency for comprehension. And I did face some challenges. Each department kind of filled out the charts a little differently, and so it was up to me to kind of really form that visual consistency with keys and whatnot. And I also had some challenge with the versions I received. Like I mentioned, some were monthly, some were weekly, and then some of them included just like the whole entire year. And some of them were just lists, so I really had some more questions on some than others, and that just kind of ate into the time a little bit. But of course, I also had successes, this was my first task, so I was very pleased when I did finish it. And it was also a great opportunity for me to learn a little bit about each department and what they do throughout the year. On this slide, you'll see this is kind of one of the finished versions of one of those yearly workflow charts. And you'll see in the right bottom, a key. And then Nate did provide sort of his overview of monthly tasks and what he does by week. But yeah, that's, Kyle also kind of polished this one up at the end, but the idea was there. My next big task was actually back in June when Nellie Lavere contacted Kyle. Nellie is from the rec department, and she was telling him about how the rec staff would be running a water safety training with a drowning simulation that involved the public safety department to come and assist in a rescue and response operation. And so my task was to photograph the training for Gray's Facebook page. And you'll see kind of around on this slide, the actual Town of Gray post on Facebook, as well as just the other photos that were taken. And overall, this was a really great opportunity to see this sort of cross-department training and coordination. Both departments were fantastic and worked amazing together. And I was really glad to be able to contribute content to Gray's Facebook page. I just really think that town residents being able to see what's going on, and that's really, a really good thing. And so this post also received excellent Facebook engagement, and it was one of the more popular posts on Facebook for Gray in that month. And it was even reshared several times, which just really added the engagement, and that's what we want to see. Another Facebook-related task that I was involved in had to do with research following the June thirteenth election. So I was asked to research and compile evidence of engagement and discussion regarding the election on Gray's Facebook page, specifically comments and discussion of the FY twenty-four budget. This was important information to gather and share, so that the town staff could easily see and review, and proactively address any misunderstandings and misconceptions that might have been picked up on. Overall, I find any combination of political and social factors especially interesting, and so looking into the socio-political discussions through the lens of the Town of Gray was a really neat opportunity. Gray staff and employees, they have an opportunity every month to participate and expand their knowledge in brunch and learn discussions. And so for my presentation, because I had the opportunity to give my own, I chose to focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and accessibility. And so this presentation began with a bird's eye view of the topic as a whole and the concepts, and then I moved into a more focused breakdown of each component. And at the end, I gave a quick overview of several human rights declarations and pieces of legislation that I feel are really good to know, working in the public sector. This presentation was, was recorded, and it's available on Gray's YouTube for employees to view. And my biggest takeaway from this opportunity was that it was just an awesome chance for me to get up and talk about a very special interest of mine. And I was also super elated, really, that I inspired great questions and dialogue amongst the attendees, and it felt good to even bridge even the tiniest information gap. For the past decade, Gray's website has been a civic, or a vendor of Civic Plus, and so Civic Plus is what we use to run our website here in the town. And so Civic Plus is, oh, yeah, Civic Plus's prices just recently went up nearly four hundred fifty dollars, and so they're saying that it's due to record inflation and soaring costs, just in general, which we see. But I was asked to proactively research alternative government website hosts, and I looked at the specific services and examples of what different vendors are putting out in terms of like, other towns using their software. And my research into the vendors was limited, as we didn't set up any demo dates, so it's really just what it is, what they offer, and examples of their work. Overall, should the need arise to reassess the town's website vendor, I know that my research may be able to inform or influence major decisions moving forward, so that was a really cool way to participate. Last week, I had the opportunity to join the Main Town City and County Management Association at the seventy-seventh Annual New England Management Institute. This was a great opportunity, it was here that I got to meet and know municipal managers from across the state. And I also attended numerous sessions during my time there, it was three days. And at these sessions, it was really focused. And at these sessions, it was really focused on professional development and leadership, and just the development of those qualities or traits. And so overall, I'm grateful to have had the opportunity to attend, and I just learned so much about the importance of connections. Thank you for your time, and if anyone has any questions?
Thank you so much, Abby. Does anyone have any questions?
Not specifically, but no, thank you very much for all that you've done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say thank you, and it sounds like you had a productive time here, but I was particularly glad to see you got to engage with other staff members and do some networking too, so I hope you found that beneficial.
Absolutely, yeah.
I just would like to thank you, Abby, and thank Hope, if she watches the video, for your time and your internship this summer, and all the great projects that you worked on. It's, it's nice to be able to spend time with people who are entering your careers and to just enjoy being around your enthusiasm and curiosity, so appreciate that. I appreciate the USM program for providing this internship to the Town of Gray at no cost to the town, and this is something they've, they offered last year also, but we weren't able to pull it together, but I'm very grateful for that. I'd also like to thank the folks who manage the Margaret Chase Smith Summer Internship Program. I've, I've worked with four or five Margaret Chase Smith interns, and it's always a great experience. It's a very well-run program, and the, the fact that they, USM program in particular, engages interns with town managers and with other folks in the profession, we hope will give you some idea what managed municipal government jobs are like, and that you might consider joining us in some capacity. And lastly, I would like to thank Kyle for doing such a great job managing the internship program this summer and last summer. And he's a really good intermediary between the interns and the other department staff, department heads, and me too. So thank you very much for that.
I just had a quick question for you about the website.
Of course.
And, and speaking about accessibility, and some of the other work that I do, the billable work that I do, it comes up sometimes of like, you know, whether or not the websites are accessible to people with, say, visual disabilities or impairments. And I, I wondered if, what, what you noticed about Gray's website, whether, for example, whether photos were captioned, or had some sort of descriptor on them to, you know, to help people understand what's being shown in them, things like that.
From just like my initial review, I haven't actually, there are programs, or there's a website, a few websites, that you can plug your website into, and it will tell you the accessibility.
Oh, okay.
And so I can share that tool with Kyle, and we could look at that. But just upon review, it is fairly accessible.
Okay. Yeah, it's been my impression, but I was curious. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby.
Thanks again.
Good luck.
Okay. Next up is Action Items, looking for a motion to review and act upon approving the appointment of Britt Barton as Register of Voters.
Council, we've, I'm recommending that you appoint Britt as the Register of Voters. Pam Edson has recently left employment with the town, and Britt is, as the town clerk, is the most obvious candidate for the position. She has done quite a bit of training with the Secretary of State's office and with Pam to prepare her for this role, and she is willing and happy to take it on.
Any comments or discussion?
Makes perfect sense to me.
Yeah.
Thank you, Britt.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes.
Do they have a motion?
It was a motion. It was.
It was Marty and.
Okay, sorry, missed that.
Okay, next up is, what are we filling in the blank here?
Um, well, we were saying.
Meaning town meeting September 9th?
Monday, approving the municipal warrant for the, so I would actually like to amend this, to approve it for the public hearing to be held on Monday, August 28th.
Okay. Do we need to put a time in, or is the date sufficient?
No, no, date's sufficient.
Okay, I'm looking for an amended motion to review and act upon approving the municipal warrant for the public hearing to be held on August, Monday, August 28th.
So moved.
Second.
Any, I know we have, probably all have comments and discussion. Nate, I think what I'd like to do is, since we kind of just got these documents today, the final documents due to people being out last week, could you give an overview of what the changes are and what we need to be aware of? And then I, I might actually, well, we could talk about it afterwards. I think it might be a good opportunity to take a short break, so we can all kind of make sure we understand what's here before we're voting on them.
Are we voting on just the date, or your, your motion is for the date?
You're voting on advancing the warrant articles to the public hearing with or without amendment, and then the public hearing is the last stop for the warrant articles before they would go to the town meeting. So we would publish them for the town meeting after the public hearing.
So what was the motion?
The motion.
Review and act upon approving the warrant.
So the motion is the town council approves the municipal warrant for the public hearing to be held on Monday, August 28th.
Thank you.
So why don't, why don't we start, Nate, with your overview, and then I'll, we can go around and talk about whether we need a break to vote.
Council, I have been tracking on an Excel spreadsheet the changes that you have agreed on from the original town FY24 budget that went to the election in June. And I tabulated all of the changes that you made up until your meeting last Thursday, sorry, last Tuesday, the 8th of August. And I've also found a couple of errors that I've corrected, and I added some additional items at the end of page two that came up as questions from your last meeting, but also other administrative items that I discovered, or that were brought to my attention by town staff, that they feel need to be addressed in this year's budget. But before I dive into that sheet, which I will, I wanted to also touch on some other material that I provided for you today. I received a, I received new bond terms yesterday from Andersgagen Bank that reflect a change in the, the bond amount. You asked me at your last meeting to check in with Buildings and Grounds Director Ma Russo, and I did. And he advised me in the email that I shared with you that there's, there will be a cost increase because we've missed the window for the pricing we had before. That was $850,000 for the bond. The pricing projection now is $950,000. I have asked for a bond proposal at even a million dollars, because the list of projects that accompanied the email that I provided for you, that has the title Pendle Complex Bond Project, does have contingencies for some of the lines, but does not have contingencies for other lines, and you conveyed to me a concern that we not had, that we wanted to make sure we had enough money to account for any further cost increases. So that's why the new bond terms are a million dollars. It's the same term of five years. Very graciously, it is the same interest rate, although interest rates have gone up quite a bit since these terms were quoted the first time. So in the letter that I copied to you from Andersgagen Bank, it has the terms of the loan and the payments, and I have incorporated those new payment amounts into the, the town's budget documentation and into that spreadsheet that I will touch on momentarily. I just wanted to make sure that we walked through that material together. So the proposed bond payment in the original budget was, I'm looking for the figure, $196,631. That amount for the five years has increased by about $35,000 to $231,330. And that is largely because the size of the bond has increased because of the time factor and missing the contractual windows for the original project proposals. Before I move on to talking about the other changes, does anyone have any questions? Or is there anything I can clarify about the bond component? Counselor, do you want?
Go ahead.
I, is there any, there's nothing in here specifically that says that the bond can be paid off early, or that principal payments can be made?
I generally, it is generally quoted that way, that we could pay it early, or if we don't use the full amount, we could just put that back into the bond principal.
That would, that would be my, I think the only way I would support the bond is this bond, since we're uncertain about the total cost, that if there is any money left over, that it be used to pay down the principal.
It does say in paragraph two of the letter that we propose a closing date, first payment due, interest will be calculated, which will be issued without a pre, a basis on the note, which will be issued without a prepayment penalty.
Yeah.
And I can make sure that that is clarified and fleshed out.
Just haven't had time to look through the information.
Sure.
That's why I asked.
So I'll, I'll make sure those terms are there.
Okay, I just have a point of clarification. So we missed that, the, the price increase fall, because we missed that window because the budget didn't pass in June?
That's correct.
Is that correct? I just want to make sure that's understood.
There were some other changes though, weren't there? I mean, there were some small adjustments, if I believe, into the, I haven't, again, studied everything.
Yeah, I don't believe the project scope.
In Mo's email.
Yeah, I don't believe the project scope changed, it's just the cost projection for the.
It sounds like a large cost impact is that we've missed the fall, because the budget failed, our timeline for beginning construction is now being pushed in, I think, a full year out, because we've missed the fall construction season this year, and we can't do it in the spring because of the use of the fields by the Little League, so we need to wait till fall next year.
We can't, or we aren't going to?
Well, yeah, that's.
Mo's memo says we, yeah, in the spring, that is, yeah, that's a policy decision.
I mean, I, I appreciate the, I don't want to do anything to, you know, to upset the apple cart for the Little League folks. I don't know if there's any way the schools can help out, that they can transfer, you know, that they can, I mean, it's a lot of extra money, and it, it, it just seems to me that if there's any way that they can move to another venue for just this one spring while we get this done, it, I think it's worth looking into. If, I mean, if they can't, they can't, but.
But is it clear that that would, that would save a lot of money by going from?
I don't know if it would, but I think given the price increase, it's worth investigating.
Do, I think the timing affected the cost by $25,000 based, according to what I'm reading in Mo's memo here, his email rather.
Right, the, the timing, because we didn't catch this fall's.
Right.
But it's going to be moved back.
Probably to summer or fall next year, I would.
Yeah.
Right, but I think the differential that's important, to Dan's question, is, is going in, doing construction in the spring, would that save money over doing it after Little League is done?
That's the question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Or is that money just lost?
There, there is a note here that some $55,000 of adjustments to the project were made.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, I see that.
So I mean, that's, there's, you know, and, and these aren't quotes, these prices, these are estimates.
These are estimates.
Clearly from rounded off figures on.
Would that cause a, doing the work in the spring, would that cause a hardship for the summer rec program? That's what I'm curious about.
I think any season is going to be a hardship for the rec program.
But if it, but if it goes into summer camp season, kids are here all day long, rather than just being here at before and after school, so that is a prolonged period of time where they wouldn't have access to the fields behind Pendle.
Well, there's no support for it, you can move on, but that's my.
Yeah, I, I guess I would say, if I knew that there was significant savings by doing it in the spring, and it was possible to do it in the spring, you know, I would, I would support that also.
I mean, is that really going to adjust how much, I mean?
I doubt it.
Yeah, we're, I think we decided in our budget conversations to up this to a million dollars before we even knew there were cost increases, because we suspected there would be, and that might still be true as time goes on, and it does give us a buffer for any unexpected changes that might occur. So I would be fine with leaving it at a million. It's a nice round number. Any decrease we get from starting in the spring would probably not be, I, I would guess it wouldn't be, you know, $500,000, you know, less, so. I'm, I'm fine with keeping it at, at the cost stat.
There's contingency on these numbers, so we should be all right.
We, there are, yeah, there are built-in contingencies on the estimates for things.
Seventy-five, seventy-five thousand roughly, and an extra fifty, so we should be all right.
Hope so. Costs have been escalated pretty wildly.
All right, is everyone okay with leaving this bond at a million with the payment as noted, or do we want?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, same here.
And Julie Rose?
Okay. Okay, thank you, Council. If I may, I'll just identify the other two documents, and these are posted on the town's website. One is the line item change document, and the other is the draft version of the special warrant. The version that's on the website has watermarking that identifies it as a draft, and a comment in the heading that states that it's a draft as of today. On the line item sheet, I wanted to note that I went back and moved the time clock fee from under Professional Certifications to another line under Professional Services as you directed, so there's no financial change to that department budget, we just moved it from one place to another. I corrected an error that I made in the Personnel Development Line for Human Resources. I had misunderstood that I, I reduced the total line to $10,000, and you had directed to reduce just the training line to $10,000, so the overall line for that budget item was 12,750, not 17,750, so I made that adjustment. There is, excuse me, on page two of the document, I found an error in the Law Enforcement line, the reduction that I had initially.
Which line is that?
Sorry, it's the Law Enforcement, about halfway down the list on second page.
It's in italic.
I've italicized those changes, yeah. That figure was off by about $1,000. It was, I had $37,000, and I increased it to $38,000 based on an email correspondence I received from Diane Boucher at the MSAD 15. So we went through, I went through, the Finance Director went through, the Town Clerk went through these figures to comb them and make sure that they were correct. And in, in the spreadsheet documents, and then I tabulated all of it into this document. And while working on that, I found that. So those are just some changes that were in the things that you've already discussed. After that line, there's a Community Service Line you discussed at the last meeting. The items after that are items that were identified for me by town department heads between last Tuesday and today, so I've listed those here also. The first two items are CIP Building Maintenance Items. One is a blow-off hydrant for two Turnpike Acres for the cost of $7,500. The Gray Water District approached us this year and told us that they did not want Public Works vehicles and Public Safety vehicles to be washed using the hydrant up at the Central Station Campus. They wanted us to install this other blow-off hydrant, and the only place, the, the most suitable place for us to do it on town property is down at Two Turnpike Acres at the, the Buildings and Grounds building.
What, what was the rationale for disallowing us? Was there a rationale for disallowing us to use the one we were trying to use?
The concern is that the hydrants are not designed to be opened and closed that frequently. And that opening and closing them that frequently will fatigue them and require them to be replaced at a pretty substantial cost to the water district.
So this type of blow-off hydrant is something you can use?
Yes, exactly. It's something you can use the way that they're using it without it creating a problem for the water system.
Is the water district making any contribution to this?
They are not. They feel that we're a user of the water... The water system, so they're treating us like they would treat other users. And the same... The same thing for the second item there. There... They are requiring a black... A backflow preventer and a new meter at the dry mill station. The water connection there doesn't have a black... A backflow on it. And there is concern that contamination could get into the water line from the operations at the fire garage. And they've cited a recent issue that happened in Waterville where there was a fire that was being fought at a senior housing facility. And some... Some of the firefighting surfactant got into the Waterville water system, and they had to close and flush the water lines.
What is housed at the dry mill station? Isn't it like an aquatics unit or something?
It is... It's... It's the... Generally, it's the call firefighter vehicles and some other additional equipment. At least that's what it was the last time I heard.
I'm just wondering, is there a danger of that sort of backflow there? Because it's the... It's the type of equipment that they saw an issue with in Waterville even being used at that very small dry mill station?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's exactly analogous in that sense. It's just the concern is that those... Those contaminations into the general water line could occur there in the estimation of the water district superintendent.
Are these things we have to do this year? They're just large line items, that's why I'm...
Yeah, these are things they asked us to do last year, and we told them we don't have any money. And I was hoping to be able to move through another year without doing them, but I was invited to a meeting with the superintendent last Monday, and he emphasized how important it was for them that we get addressed these issues. So I'll just put that out there for your consideration. I've commented already on the debt service increase, so that's recorded here in the third line. The warrant articles will reflect the next two lines. The town attorney and I talked today about changes in the GASB standards for how unassigned funds, assigned funds, reserve funds, and restricted funds are reported in municipal finance. And she has suggested that we move those budget items out of the CIP budget and into separate warrant articles. So there's no change in the budget for these two items. It's just being moved out of CIP and into a direct transfer of money from unassigned balance into these specific funds. But I noted them here.
So these are new specific funds?
These are... These are... These are... This is the way she's advising that these funds need to be designated as part of your budgeting process, rather than identifying them as part of the general fund budget and saying, "We're going to make these designated funds." We need to make them designated funds in the budget in the warrant articles. And instead of moving the money through CIP into these funds, to just move the money directly into them.
I'm so fed up with the growth of warrant articles and all of the policy things that are getting mixed in with trying to put together this budget. And, you know, the... The stuff from the water district at like... What would they have done if the budget had passed in June? They'd have to wait till next year.
They would have. I'm just recording these for you because they've come to my attention, and I feel it's my responsibility to bring them to your attention.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Not trying to... Not trying to kill the messenger. Just understand.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. And I'm just trying to make sure that your warrant articles do what you're... You're instructing me to do as far as designating those funds. And it was a question that came up as we were reviewing this. It just, you know...
Yep.
We're not doing it the right way, the way we were doing it before, according to town attorney. And I think... I think she's right. I'm going to move on. The human resources director has asked that we have a separate dedicated fax line installed for his office because he receives confidential correspondence related to personnel and benefits. And some of that includes sensitive information. It is impractical and inconvenient for those to be received at the clerk's fax machine, which is the only fax machine we have. And so he's recommending that we create a new line just to... So he can do his due diligence on protecting the confidentiality. And it's a fairly minimal cost at $120 a year. The public works department, in light of the recent washout storm events and the overtime that the staff has had to put in to address those... Those washouts and the water coming up onto the road, I have been asked to include an increase in summer overtime in next year's budget. I... I don't have an exact figure on how much more overtime has been put in over the last probably 10 days. We've had at least three different quick, heavy storm events that have caused road conditions to deteriorate. So I added that in on request from the public works director. We found a miscalculation in the Excel spreadsheet on the FICO Medicare calculation for the communications department to the tune of basically the... The money set aside for Medicare for that department was not being calculated correctly. And we... The town clerk found that error. And we corrected that cell in the spreadsheet, and that increase is reflected here. And then lastly, we eliminated the finger check technical support customer service from the communications budget because the time clock software will replace that if it's approved in the budget. And that was to a COF savings of about $5,500. So if you include all of these changes that I'm identifying and recommending from your last meeting, the decrease in the town budget versus the original proposal is $745,000. So I just submit that to you as my recommendation. These figures are in the draft town warrant. We certainly can amend that and change that and republish it as amended. If you want to review and discuss any of these, the charges that are on this line item sheet, or the changes that are on the line item sheet, excuse me. But if I may, I'd like to walk you through the warrant article draft because I think it sort of goes along with the material on the line item sheet. And we can... I'd be happy to take questions on the line item sheet first, however you want to approach it.
I'm inclined to just let you continue, and then we'll just do questions at the end. Or is there one? Is anyone opposed to that?
No.
Okay, thank you, counsel. So this warrant article sheet was developed as an amendment to the first warrant article sheet from the June election. So a lot of these... The structure will be similar. There are some changes, and the figures, of course, have changed. Article one is to choose the moderator. So imagine that we're actually going to walk through this set of warrants at the in-person meeting on Saturday, September the ninth. The first article is to choose the moderator. The second article is to ask for the permission to accept federal, state, and other sources of revenue. These is what we would call intergovernmental transfers. And those... Those funds would be used for funding the town's general fund budget and the town's capital budget. Article three is the town's general fund budget. And you will note that... There's a $2 signs there, I'll eliminate that as a clerical error. You may note that this figure, in the past, has included under municipal expenses the cost of Article five, which is the capital projects budget. And we... The town attorney and I feel that that is misleading if you include that amount of money twice. It looks like your budget is $15 million total when it's actually the total's in the $12 million range. So we have removed that from the municipal expenses line. That's a significant change in the budget. So Article five is completely the capital budgets... The capital budget. Article three is completely the general fund budget. The other changes that were made on the individual departmental lines reflect the incremental changes that are all recorded in your line item document. So we could go back and compare this to the original one if you wanted to. But I have gone in... The clerk and the finance director have gone and checked each one of the lines on here and the total line. We've run the total line by the town assessor. And we're all in agreement that these figures are accurate to the changes that you have recommended sets the ballot in June. So the total general fund budget expenses is $9,337,000. There is a note at the bottom of Article three specifying that this budget will only pass if Article 11, the LD1 property tax levy limit, also passes. Because at... At this level, the... We'll get to Article 11 later. But at this budget, the town is... Will need to increase that property tax levy by $55,477.
I'll wait till you finish.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Okay, so I'm going to move on to Article four, or do you want to ask a question?
No, no, let's finish.
Article four is the appropriation for the town council compensation. It's required by the town charter for you to have this in as a separate article. It's the same amount of money. As I said before, Article five is the capital budget. And I will note later on in the articles that we've removed a couple of items from here, as I stated before, for... In order to meet GASB rules. Article six is appropriation of TIF revenue. This figure has not changed, $626,753, for the projects that you've identified to support the Gray Village and road construction projects.
Can we... Can we add a note there that indicates this? It's not an increase to... We're taking it from existing funds. We're... It's not a new... A new cost.
Kind of tax impact.
New tax impact.
The town... The town attorney recommends again any notes like that on any of the other articles because you would need to do them on all of the articles, and it would get more complex.
Well, you have one on Article three.
You do because of the Article 11 that's directly tied to that article itself. It's not an explanation that could be interpreted as being influential. I... I would suggest instead that you draw that out in your informational content and at your special meeting. I think that's a very important thing to clarify. It just may be that the warrant article's not the place to do it. Article seven is the... The use of funds in the enterprise accounts, so receiving money for the childcare program and using that money to fund the childcare program. Article eight is about allowing the town to dispose of town-owned personal property, for example, a fire engine that's being retired and sold.
Been the same for forever.
Yes, so that's just so you know. Article nine is to whether you will accept donations of personal property. This is also boilerplate for use at those specific departments or buildings. Article 10 is to allow you to apply for and receive grant funds, such as like DOT funding. Article 11 is the LD1, so-called LD1 tax levy cap article, and that specifies the amount that the current budget exceeds the state-defined cap. Article 12 is the land acquisition reserve fund for the 1/12ths that you talked about apportioning. We have changed the language to say not to exceed $417,000 because we won't know the exact unassigned general fund balance until FY23 closes. This is the estimate that we received from the former finance director, and I think it's an accurate estimate. But not to exceed is the key language there. Article 13 is the ARPA fund use that you specified during your budget deliberations. We've included this as a new warrant article because it is required that ARPA funding appropriations be approved by whatever your approval process is, which in this case is the voters. And we've put those in line items so that it's clear to the voters what the total amount is being used for.
We've never had to do this before.
Yes. We've never had ARPA money before.
What about last year's allocations that were not voted in?
Yeah, those... That was for last year's warrant, so we're improving. Oh, those were under the threshold amount. You're allowed to allocate a certain amount of ARPA money up to like 10%, but over that, you had to use a election process. Okay. Article 14 is the... The article that puts the $100,000 into a capital reserve fund for FY20. Five, we are doing that as a separate article rather than rolling it into the budget for the sake of clarity and transparency and because it meets the GASB standard.
Does it have to... Why does it say surf... Well, we're waiting, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, it... Because that's the way that we decided to write it because it's coming out of your capital unassigned fund balance. We can certainly remove that if you like. Article 15 is, again, a GASB rule where instead of putting the money that you want to allocate for the land acquisition reserve fund, the $50,000, instead of allocating that out of CIP, we're allocating it directly out of Capital Improvement Reserve Fund. Similarly, with Article 16, this is the town attorney's recommendation on allocating the $20,000... Or, excuse me, the $10,000. You want out... You've suggested out of this year's budget to go into the Buildings and Grounds Capital Reserve Fund. But it also identifies the $20,000 that you specified in the FY23 budget that was not... That was not put into that fund using a warrant article. And then it also specifies the ability for the council to use the full amount, the $20,000 plus the $10,000, the full $30,000 in the event that you need to use it for capital improvements and projects related to Buildings and Grounds. Article 17 is to ratify the funds that you appro... You apportion to a emergency fund in the event that we activate the emergency operations plan and the town declares a state of emergency from the FY23 budget. So that money is sitting in the unassigned fund. Last year, you said this is what you wanted to do with it. This year, we're just recording and formalizing that with this article. And then the last article is the bond, the revised bond article, which... Which shows the increase in the bond principal and the increase in the total interest payments over five years. The material on the financial statement is not the section... The first section about bonds, interest, and that's already been... The town has already taken on. That has not changed. But the additional information about the total additional bonds and interest, and then the total amount, that was updated to reflect the new bond terms. The rest of the material is the boilerplate from before. And then there's a signature line for all of the council members on the last page. Okay, so that's my overview. Again, if you elect to make changes in the recommendations on the line item sheet, I can record those, and then we can make those changes to the draft warrant articles. And if you choose to advance as written or amended warrant articles and budget material to the August 28 meeting, we will present those revisions as part of the public hearing and public information noticing that we will do for that special meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Nate. That was a lot of work. Thank you to you and other staff, Britt and Justine and Lauren for working on all this last week or two. The first question that popped to mind was Article 14, where we're asking a separate question for transferring money from the unassigned fund balance into the capital reserve fund to create a reserve of $100,000. Is that total still... Is that $100,000 still reflected in the total under Article five? Or has it been pulled out?
It is... It is pulled out of Article five. It would have been under a separate line under Article five.
Right, it would have been like road resurfacing. Right, it would have been like road resurfacing, reserved.
Yes, correct, it would have been reserved, capital reserve, yeah.
Okay. So, we're basically treating thi, this reserve fund for capital projects as a de, as a designated fund, similar to how we're treating these new Articles Fifteen through Seventeen? Is that correct?
Yes, that's exactly right. And we are, you know, we are, we are counting all of these other appropriations toward the total town appropriation on the commitment sheet.
Right.
So, those are all being included in the commitment. They're just being pulled out of the capital budget line and put into separate, separate lines.
What totals on these warrants are actually affecting the bottom line, like the total amount?
Article, shoot.
Article Three?
Article Three, Article Five. And then Article...
Article Fourteen.
Article Eight? Sorry, sorry, sorry.
There's Article Eight.
That's the wrong one.
That's just accepting the selling.
You're right, you're right, I was looking for that, it's Article Fourteen. Article Fifteen.
Right, 'cause that's an additional fifty.
Article Sixteen.
Which is the additional ten.
Additional ten, correct.
And then Article Seventeen is just transferring money from...
Yeah, that's just recording something that's already been done.
In FY twenty-three.
Correct.
Okay, so if we add up all those, then that should be our total, total.
Yes, which is two, I have that. The total for non-general fund budget items is two million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty-six. And combined with the total general fund expenses of nine million, three hundred and thirty-six, nine twelve, the, the total appropriation is twelve million, fifty-nine, four sixty-eight.
Say that again?
Twelve million, zero, five, seven, four, six, eight.
Seven, five, seven.
Zero, five, seven, four, six, eight. Which is down about seven hundred or so.
Seven hundred thousand, if you will.
Not seven thousand, four hundred and twenty, two hundred and eight?
It should be exactly the figure that's on your, on your sheet there.
Mine is seven, four, five...
Seven, four, five, two, oh.
Two, eight.
Should be that, it should be that number.
Is the order of these, um, well, my turn.
You go ahead, Dan, I'm doing math, I'm, so go ahead.
Is the order of these articles sacred?
No.
Can we put, can we put all of the articles that have money that equals that twelve million, fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight together?
Sure.
And show that those articles equal twelve billion, fifty-seven, four hundred and sixty-eight?
Yes.
And then what we need to say somehow, communicate, is that the rest of the articles are just permission to move the money around the budget?
Yes.
Because this is nuts. And you're telling me that in the course of two months, from June to now, Alyssa's discovered somehow that we have to go through all of this? I mean, it's, 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 never mind.
It's, what, what we have here in a lot of cases is legacy documents that we use year after year that don't get attention until they do.
I'm sorry, but she's looked at every single one of our warrants for years, or somebody in that office has. So, it's not because it's some legacy document that we've just been copying over and over and over again. Something changed, and I don't know what it is. And this is gonna be more complicated to explain. How are you gonna fit this one up, postcard?
In this case, I think what changed is that I, you know, we had that conversation about how to, how to track those designated funds. And in having that conversation, we talked about the way the principles, you know, the rules for G A S B have changed the way that this is recommended. I, I don't disagree with you, counselor, it would have been good to have had all this earlier.
How many more warrant articles are there here versus what we voted on in June?
I think there were fourteen, I'm sure, remembering, yeah.
You're not gonna equal out now, there's, you're, it's not gonna be, you're not gonna be able to do an apples-to-apples comparison.
Right.
Hey, I mean, if we did ten minutes on each warrant, you know, item, still be in three hours. Never mind, somebody said thirty minutes of warrant.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, communicate Article Twelve or Article Eighteen.
Go ahead, Nate.
Our, our goal here was to, you know, increase the transparency around the, the budget and the way that the funds were being allocated and used, and, and the purposes for those funds, particularly in the case of these designated funds that are supposed to carry from year to year and create a sort of a, like in the, in the land acquisition fund to create, you know, like a, a, a pot, an amount of money that you could use to actually make a real estate purchase. And I, 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 it could, it could, could it be that by clarifying these, separating these out, clarifying these articles, it might make it easier for the voters to understand what they're voting on?
Doesn't make it easier for me to understand.
No, I feel like every wordy paragraph we add is just...
It, you know, what we had to do was pass a budget and get over that hurdle. And I just feel like we've mixed a whole bunch of policy stuff in with this budget piece that I'm still learning.
Is there, is there a way to defer some of these changes to warrant articles to FY twenty-five? I, I mean, I don't know, it's probably never a good time to do it, but it just seems like, I, I, I mean, to Dan's point, it makes, it does make it really hard to say, you know, compare what we voted on in June to what we're gonna vote on in September. And, you know, I, I mean, my guess is there's a relatively small number of voters who may even track that, but, you know, often they're the more vocal ones who are, are more likely to show up and vote.
I mean, none of us wanna do anything that's less than transparent.
Yeah, absolutely.
And all of us want to, to bring our processes as up-to-date as possible. But there's a, you know, there's a timing thing there, there's a, you know, can we do this? Yeah, we can do this, we can sell, we can explain this. But it just, it just seems, it's...
Yeah, I, you know, I'm not questioning anyone's, you know, intent, but...
No, the intent is great.
That, you know, like the, it's like lawyers and engineers, you know, maybe see the world differently than, than I do. 'Cause what's, what improves clarity to them diminishes clarity to me. And, and, I mean, that's, that's how I feel about it. But, I mean, we're stuck, because, right, lawyers and engineers run the world.
Well, they, they, I mean, I'm not trying to take any value away from anything. I mean, obviously, we're dependent on them, because they help us, prevent us from making mistakes. But, but they don't seem to understand that there's other dimensions to the process than just the work that they do. And that's the, that's where the frustration hits the road for me. You know, and, and this one, a hundred and twenty bucks for the fax line, I wouldn't even brought that to us. I mean, that could have come out of contingency, and, and rather than spend any time on, on some of that, those little changes, at this late stage in the game.
It, it's always hard for me to predict, counselor, which little or large changes somebody might point to and, and critique. So, I, I'm trying to do all of it, and what you're seeing here is a tremendous amount of attention and zeal from the town staff and me and the town attorney to try to get this as right as we can and to make it as clear as we can. And if we've fallen short of that mark, or if you feel that this is less clear, I'm, I'm sorry that, you know...
No, I, I don't fault anybody for it, and I appreciate all the work that all the people you just mentioned have done. It's the communication piece, it's the knowing that there's this huge policy change coming along with the budget stuff, and finding out tonight at the meeting that there's this policy change. That, that's the communication piece.
I think, right, I, the, the problem is that we had, there, people were out of the office last week and just got this done.
Maybe we're just trying to get it done too quickly, I don't know.
Right, I, do we have, first of all, I wanna know if we have any flexibility on these gray water district charges. And second of all, I agree, I think we have too many warrants. And if we can defer the, I like Dan's idea to defer the changes that were recommended by our lawyer to FY twenty-five votes, I think that makes sense, but...
Can't, can't, yeah.
Yeah.
I can ask.
I think if we don't vote on this tonight, though, it's going to impact...
Yeah, it'll trickle down.
Our timeline for the public hearing.
I can, I have to schedule the public hearing for that date. I don't have to publish warrant articles until, you know, the, the timeline for the meeting packet material, which would be, let me pull up my calendar. So, for a meeting on the...
You'd need to publish them on the twen, Monday, the twenty-first, right?
Monday, the, sorry, for, yeah, for, getting into September here. I mean, that's right.
As frustrated as I am, Alyssa wouldn't have suggested this if she didn't think that this was the way to go. And so, asking Alyssa, can we do anything else, she's probably gonna say, well...
I know she's gonna say no, but...
She's gonna say, this is the way you should do it, I mean... Yeah, yeah, and rightly so, I appreciate, and that's what her job is, is to...
I have a point of clarification. I, I'm familiar with the generally accepted accounting principles, but, so, but I'm not, this is the first time, actually, I've ever heard the term G A S B.
Yeah.
Used in the town business, yes.
Well, we use it, I mean, the finance directors always use it, but it's not been something that we've brought to you before, 'cause we've not been in a, you know...
It's been around for decades.
Yeah.
Well, I know it's not new, but it's new to our discussion.
Yeah, I understand.
One other thing is, I'm not comparing the, our new numbers on the warrants and the tracking sheet you gave us for changes. I'm not, I'm not getting the same decrease in the total.
I haven't had any time to do any of that, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just saying if I'm taking the proposed FY twenty-four municipal budget number from our June vote and making the changes that we've outlined here, I'm getting a different total.
I would need to talk to the town assessor and see if there are any other numbers included in that figure that I am not accounting for here.
Okay, 'cause it's a difference of about forty-five hundred dollars. It's not, it's not a lot, but... Well, what, I guess, how do people wanna proceed? Do we, do we feel there's too many changes to vote on this tonight, or do we...
I wanna vote on it.
I wanna vote on it too, yeah. I mean, I, I, I think that, that, you know, it's, it's gonna be a, a speed bump at any time we introduce these additional four warrant articles. It is, you know, pesky, I, 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 you know, I do share Dan's concern that we won't be able, that voters won't be able to compare, you know, the warrant articles of June to see how they compare, you know, compared to the warrant articles in September. That being said, I'm just not sure how many people would do that exercise. I know, as a voter, I would probably, I would just go on, on, I would just look at what, at what was presented at the town meeting and listen to the explanation. We, we do have an opportunity at the public hearing, and again, in the, the sort of early meeting before the special town meeting, to explain why they're looking at more warrant articles, and that's actually a benefit. I mean, because we ordinarily, we, we would have a harder time communicating that to voters who simply showed up at, at New Begin to vote. So, I, I mean, I...
This is silver lining.
Yeah, I mean, I, it isn't, it isn't, you know, it's gonna be, you know, confusing for people as it is a little bit for us, but I, I'm not, you know, I, I'm not sure that it really matters. And I, I would rather have that conversation in person in, in some degree and to try to, you know, explain to people prior to them showing up at New Begin to do it. So, anyway, that's just my thinking.
Would it be, looking at the warrant articles and it, I, I just wanna know if it would be inappropriate to put forward a change to the amount in Article Fourteen to reduce that amount? Fifty thousand dollars?
I mean, you certainly can propose it, it, it depends on if we all wanna have a conversation about it.
Yes, Article Fourteen.
Article Fourteen's a reserve fund for C I P. I mean, we kind of hashed that out quite a bit last time we met, and...
Yeah.
We, we agreed to settle on a hundred thousand dollar reserve.
And, you know, and, and I'm just struck that, you know, the numbers have changed, and, and I didn't know. If there's no support for it, then fine, you know, I don't wanna waste time.
You're, you're right, the numbers have changed, which buy about fifty thousand, fifty-ish, forty thousand dollars.
Just on that warrant art, I mean, actually, to Matthew's point, I mean, it seemed to me that we discussed adding the hundred thousand dollars as a, as a kind of reserve for the penal project, and we, now we've increased that bond, you know, to reflect additional higher costs, to be sure. But that, you know, there's fifty thousand sort of in the C I P, I mean, I'm sorry, in the bond, for cost overruns, kind of. And so, if we reduce this to fifty, then we're...
But the, but the tricky part there is if the bond fails, then we have even less money in C I P to attend to this, you know, the septic system and things that need to attend to, so...
Right. But then we get closer, if we, if we reduce it to fifty, then we get closer to the sort of eight hundred thousand that we, I mean, was, wasn't a particular goal, but that was kind of where we left the last meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to reducing it, I... I don't wanna go to zero, but perhaps fifty would be a compromise, given the fact that our budget has now increased again by forty-five thousand dollars. Marty, do you have any thoughts on that? It's the capital improvement reserve money that leads to... Dan?
I'm leaving it at a hundred. You got the votes to change it if you want.
Yeah. What are your thoughts, Nate?
Just would say, unless you're making enough changes to the budget to get below the LD One threshold, I think what it really comes down to is, are the voters in the room gonna support the budget? If they're gonna support the budget, they're also gonna vote for the LD One override. And if, if your goal is to get below the LD One threshold, the fifty-six thousand dollars, then a fifty thousand dollar cut to, is it gonna get you there?
Well, the LD One in twenty-two was over a million dollars.
Yeah.
So, this LD One was eight hundred and change. So, you've gotten it down to, you know, fifty-five thousand. So, it's significantly less than what people were willing to do before. I think, quite frankly, that LD One question was part of us getting punished for presenting the budget that we did. So, whether, you know, whether people will see that that's a reasonable change or not, I'm, I'm not a predictor of what voters will do. I, I think that the hundred thousand, I thought we were putting in, we were putting in at least that much in, because we also had the fire truck in, in FY twenty-five. And I thought, this is, it was essentially the old-fashioned designated fund, but...
I think what we decided, Dan, which, we did talk about what you're saying, but now that Dan's saying that, I'm remembering what we decided. We decided to put in a hundred thousand dollars to cover the lease payment for the fire truck next year, is what we were, that that's what we...
Yeah, that's what we were thinking, yeah.
Good, thank you.
But if that's the case, it should be a separate warrant question.
I mean, it's a res, it's a reserve, it was... I don't know if we were still calling it a reserve at the end of our meeting last time, though, or if we were just saying it was in there as a buffer, kind of, for that payment. It was, we were...
I did not make the connection with putting, salting money away for the fire truck.
Yeah.
Before, last time.
Go ahead.
You had also, counsel rightly identified, that other issues could come up over the course of the next year, and that having some extra money in reserve might help cushion that.
We can't spend that money.
You cannot.
So, I mean, it, it's not really a cushion for this year.
The other factor is that you have made some cuts in the C I P budget ostensibly to push off into FY twenty-five, and that's not a inconsequential amount of money. It was, it was over a hundred thousand dollars worth of things that were deferred.
Yeah.
I, I would, I know two of you wanna leave in, I would like to leave it at a hundred thousand, so that we'll just... I, I would, I know two of you want to leave in. I would like to leave it at a hundred thousand, so that we'll just.
Okay.
I'm sorry with me.
Yep.
Uh, okay, so it sounds like we're.
Somebody may change it at the meeting.
Sounds, right. Uh, it sounds like we're all okay with voting on these. Do we have any amendments to them?
Other than the restructuring that I talked about.
Moving, moving them around.
I support that.
Yeah. I'm fine with the, yeah, that sounds, and if we could have a, like Dan suggested, some sort of total adding them up when they're restructured. I don't know if we can do that.
Uh, probably not, but I can certainly group them if grouping them, if you think that makes more logical.
Well, I think it does. At least when we explain it, we can say Articles one through X are the total budget and Articles X through Z are, are permission to, to move money.
With that in mind, I will move Article four, the town council compensation, down.
Yeah.
And I'll put three and four together. Article three and five will become three and four and then I'll bring Articles fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen up under those and then the rest of it, as you, well, you have an allocation of TIF revenue and then you have an allocation of ARPA money, so I should bring the ARPA money up with TIF.
But those don't, those don't add to the budget.
That's not in our budget.
Well, I'm, okay.
That's what, that's what I.
So you're saying do all of the town budget and then do the other stuff?
Yes, 'cause the other stuff is just permission to spend money from other accounts that aren't, right.
Right, that's similar to the, the town council compensation, that it's not affecting, it's already in the budget.
I can do that.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, I take up time with a typo, but there is an extra dollar sign in that.
Yes, I saw that one. I get that one.
Where?
Article three. Did you see another one?
No.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Yeah, I saw that.
Um, and then legal, the other question I had in Article three, under council boards and committees, the legal in parentheses is the first time that's been there. Is there a reason for that?
No, I don't think so. I don't know why that's particularly called out. So I will, I will strike that unless anybody's disagreeing.
Yeah, I think you should take that out. That's confusing.
Because people are, you know, it's, it's in the budget.
There's legal in several areas in the budget.
Yeah, there's legal all over the place, so.
Actually, I have one whiner wordsmithing we may not be able to change.
Yeah.
No, you, you're making changes, so you're gonna maybe give me an as amended motion tonight.
Yeah, so, um, in, in, in the, under greetings and that, that next line, the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn inhabitants. It sounds so ominous. Can we just say alert? There's no way we can change that?
Notify? Well, notify's already on there.
That's probably.
Yeah, it's old, old school.
Yeah, it's like, it just seems.
Arcade?
Yes, it's kind of ominous. It sets up a bad vibe.
It does, absolutely. That, this whole, much of this is my complaint about the way these are written.
Any other?
I mean.
Oh, go ahead, Dan, sorry.
Well, and other, just in the fact that, you know, if the, if, if these can be reformatted to, so that they're a bit more blocked out rather than just these paragraphs of narrative, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't really looked at it yet. I don't know if that's possible.
Block out the formatting?
Just the, it just is, it, it's. Where there's money involved, it feels like it is the, the presentation in Article five or the presentation in Article three or the presentation in Article thirteen just makes that clear. So like, if, if there's a way to write this like Article eight, you know, to see if the town authorized to dispose the personal battery up to a, a hundred thousand, and then you have a hundred thousand again, I don't know.
No, that one's a different one. That's just a catch-all. But do you prefer the, the way Article thirteen is presented over three and five? Or do you not like either of them?
Five is not bad. I mean, I can, whether there, whether there's borders or not, I don't.
I'm sorry if I'm missing the, I'm, I'm.
That's all right.
I may be missing what you're.
Yeah, I'm wrong.
I think he wants to call, he wants to call out the monetary figure beneath the, the text.
Yeah, whether it's bold faced or just something to.
Right, you can either put it beneath the text or, or bold it or, yeah.
And thirteen doesn't have that or a total.
Thirteen does not have a total.
Oh, it does not.
It's just the totals in the word, in the paragraph.
At the top. I can certainly add that.
Yeah, that would be good, I think.
All right.
And then I think I would get rid of cents and I would also.
Oh, yeah, that's silly.
And I would also like in, in Article five, it should be right justified, not left justified.
Yep.
Um, same with Article three, those, those little formatting things, I think is.
Right justify the table?
All, yeah, the numbers, numbers should always be right justified.
No, the, the numbers.
Oh, all the numbers, okay, all right.
'Cause you've got, you know, if you look at, you know, if you look at Article three.
Sure, yeah, it, it looks.
Councils and boards is seventy-five thousand, but law enforcement is two eighty-four.
I'm gonna, I'll remake those tables. They were tricky to format, so I'll just rebuild them.
Little things like that.
Okay.
And then, you know, for some reason, the, you know, you have the total budget and the numbers off in right field there.
Yeah, I don't know why that's.
I don't know if you can.
I can move that?
Bring that together, but I think bold facing the totals is a, is a good idea. The financial statement, the last page, which I guess we have to put on there, also needs to be right justified. That does have cents. I.
That probably needs to have cents.
It probably does, but if it doesn't, it'd be nice to, I'd rather do one million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Just round up.
Yeah, that would be my advice.
I would do it however you want.
Round down there. That's not, it's not round up.
Yeah, round up. It's under fifty cents.
Okay, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Go inflate the budget.
Hey, you know, I was trying, hey, I wanted to cut it. I was just trying to get you another sixty-something cents, that's all.
Okay, any other amendments?
No, for right now, that's what I got.
Right, yeah. Okay, so Marty and Matthew, Matthew, you had the motion, Marty with the second. Are you okay with the amended motion?
Yeah. I, I moved to amend my motion, if that's what I do.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
Perfect. Well done.
Motion to amend to, uh, get the warrant articles as amended.
As amended.
Yeah.
As amended, so approve for, to review and act upon approving the municipal warrant for the public hearing to be held on August twenty-eighth as amended.
Correct, okay.
Matthew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, oh, next up is my, um. Next up is report from the council chair. Um, just want to remind everyone, we have an executive session and workshop that Nate emailed about on next Wednesday, August twenty-third at five thirty, I believe, is that, yeah. And then we've set a public hearing for August twenty-eighth at six and a town meeting on September ninth, beginning, the special meeting at, uh, nine thirty and a, following the actual town meeting at ten thirty. Um, I also just want to acknowledge and thank, uh, everybody for their hard work on the Gray Blueberry Festival. It was, I attended, um, to award the volunteer awards with Marty and Ann and also just was there with my family and it was quite a large crowd. I thought last year was big and this was even bigger. And, uh, it just gets better every year, so I want to thank everyone for all their hard work. I know, um, I ran into several employees and, uh, they were definitely busy that day, so, but everything was running really smoothly. Um, and then I also, um, want to thank Ann and Marty for helping me co-present the volunteer awards. Um, I know this year we sort of, we were hoping to do the awards at our new community day and that didn't come together in time. We've moved it to the Blueberry Festival. I really think, um, and perhaps I'll add this to our retreat, um, conversation, uh, we really need to come up with an, another strategy for how we're awarding these volunteer awards because, um, it's, it, it's significant for the people receiving the awards. It's a special occasion. They invite their family. Um, and it feels really informal at the Blueberry Festival, no matter.
Gets lost, does it?
Yeah, it gets lost, um, and so I, I, I would just like to have a conversation about what our approach is next year.
Thank you all for doing that.
Yeah.
Will we discuss that at the?
I think we could discuss it at the retreat, yeah.
I don't think that's gonna take a lot of time.
No, um, also, I just wanted to let you know that Annie Graham has contacted Nate and I to talk about, just to, to touch base on what we need for addressing, um, gray road issues and we're trying to work out a scheduled meeting for that, hopefully in the next week or two. Um, and then, um, the short, uh, self-storage unit ordinance should be coming back up for first reading on September fifth, according to our schedule, uh, that we've received from Kristen in planning. And then I just want to take a moment to congratulate, congratulate the Gray New Gloucester Raymond Little League, um, New England champions.
Yes.
Their, their first game in the Little League, Little League World Series, I believe is this Thursday and it's being streamed on ESPN and my guess would be that it's, several businesses will be hosting a streaming event. And I want to thank Anthony for pulling, and probably Nellie too, for pulling together a last minute viewing of the New England championship last week, the people, they streamed it, um, in New Begin Hall for people to come watch, I think.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. I think they're gonna do it again, right, this week?
I, I don't know. I haven't heard, but.
Oh, I thought they had, but maybe I was wrong.
If they, if they could, that would be great. I'm sure people would come. Uh, that's all I had for council chair report. Nate, did you want to?
Thank you, counselor. Um, as you note from my, um, report, I've spent a lot of time working on budget material, so that's been the bulk of my, um, work since the last meeting. I did attend the Maine Town City County Managers Institute at Sugarloaf last week. It was informative. There were a lot of good presentations and as always, I brought back a lot of ideas and notes to follow up on with other members of town staff. Um, I wanted to note for you that I plan, I'm going to make contact with a candidate for, uh, conducting the town's audit for FY twenty-three. Uh, as I noted last meeting, um, our audit firms have withdrawn from, uh, their proposals. Uh, so if I'm not successful in talking with this, uh, firm tomorrow, I'm going to repost the R F P and try to find another audit firm. Other than that, I again want to just recognize Kyle for the great work he's done this summer managing the internship program. It's really refreshing and, uh, fun to have students working here with us. And lastly, I want to thank the Gray Fire and Rescue Association for the invitation to participate in the chicken barbecue last Saturday. I had a really fun time working hard for a couple hours, or an hour and a half anyway, and meeting a lot of Gray folks who were happy and smiling and appreciative of their chicken and I.
It's a popular event.
I was glad to be a part of that. Yeah, it was great. So thank you to, uh, the folks over at Gray Fire Rescue.
It's hard on the chickens, but.
It is hard on the chickens, but boy, do they taste good. Thank you.
Okay, enjoyed my chicken very much.
Oh, I missed it again. Um, okay, on to committee reports. Matthew, can you begin?
So the library trustees met on July twenty-fifth. Um, they addressed, uh, some uh, policy issues regarding, you know, like, uh, lent, you know, uh, library cards and lending, you know, the number of items lent and, and who's eligible for library cards and that sort of thing. Oh, and we also, you know, discussed the staffing issues that Nate presented recently, I think, maybe, I, I can't remember. But, um, yeah, they're, they're dealing with some staffing issues. They're trying to, if, you know, try and hire one position rather than fill both vacancies they have. Um, you know, they've had difficulty keeping people on. The community television, um, committee, advisory committee is, uh, meeting, um, next week on the twenty-third. I did not make their last meeting. Um, the rec committee had a meeting on the seventh, which I couldn't go to because we had a workshop. But they'll be meeting September fourth next. And library trustees, uh, don't meet until September, the fourth, Tuesday in September.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. Marty?
Okay. Planning committee had a site walk on, uh, August third at Jenny Lane off Campbell Shore Road. It was the best, uh, best turnout ever. They said, uh, what's interesting on that one is it's zoned for single family and they're planning on building duplexes. There's no meeting for the planning committee in August. The zoning board will, also will not have a meeting in August. The finance committee meeting is scheduled for September twenty-first at four P M. and we're looking for new members. And the last one is the Blueberry Festival, Wild Blueberry Festival was last Saturday. Here on this campus, we estimate the attendance between thirty-three hundred and thirty-five hundred people. The overflow from the parking lot went, went into, went in, went into the, the Legion parking lot. Other details on the, the financial information or, will, will follow is available. And I'd like to, I'd like to send out a special thanks to Lacy and Mo for, for, uh, for all their talent and, 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 and good work. And that's all I have.
And I forgot the Gray, uh, the, um, Dry Mill Schoolhouse Committee. They also met last week and had an open house for the Historical Society, um, and they mostly discussed their preparations for the Blueberry Festival. But they'll be meeting again next month. In the, in the evening, they met in the morning, just to, uh, be able to accommodate the Historical Society.
Thanks, Marty and Matthew, for the addition. Uh, Dan?
Uh, as Marty said, the planning board has no meeting this month. Uh, the finance committee has no planned meeting right now. Nor any of the other committees that I'm on, uh, from the month of August. That was pretty easy.
Yeah, okay. Ann?
Uh, yeah, I was on vacation during most of July, but the hardworking open space committee, uh, met in July and August and I was present at those. Um, they, the, the open space committee co-sponsored a presentation at the library by Zach Ruda of Rewild Maine on invasive species. I understand that Zach did a, did both a presentation and led a walking tour in the village and that, uh, it was, uh, Mun and Tendi reached out to me and was very complimentary about that event. Um, Open Space had a table at the, at the Blueberry Fest where we had a number of good conversations with visitors to the table about what the committee has done and is planning to do going forward. Uh, worked hard on recruiting the two new members that we are, are missing, or two, you know, to, for the two vacancies that we have. Um, I just want to note that, uh, the committee voted to approve using funds from the open space budget to purchase a reusable banner for display at public events and, and that really helped, I think, bring people to our table, so that would, thank you for that. Um, and we're still working on recommendations, run, recommendations for changes to the subdivision ordinances to promote open space and have been working with the planning department on that. At the September meeting, the members will review questions and recommendations for changes to those ordinances. Um, and just, the Open Space voted at its last meeting to change its standing monthly meeting from the first Wednesday of the month to the second Wednesday, which works better for our scheduling. Um, neither resiliency nor, nor, uh, neither resiliency nor C E D C have, has a quorum at this point. Um, so, uh, I, I think that resiliency will, uh, you know, some new members, potential new members have been recruited. We hope to see their applications in September. Um, so just, I always like to remind folks that you are part of local government. We can't do it without you. Our town depends on volunteers. So please, if you have an interest in resiliency or in, uh, community economic development, uh, join those committees or any of the other ones that, that have vacancies. Um, and that's it for me.
Um, G P C O G, executive committee will be resuming meetings next month, so we don't have any updates there. Um, O A C met on July twenty-seventh. Uh, we discussed, um, the critical rural, rural versus rural designations from the comp plan, land use mass, map and, um, a process for designating what types of land really belongs in those. Um, for instance, do agricultural, uh, current, lands that are currently being used agriculturally deserve conservation recognition, recognition as critical rural? Um, where do you put general gravel, gravel pits? Do they belong in rural residential or do they belong in just a general rural zone? Uh, and the O A C members really reiterated that we need a process for having open meetings with the different landowner types as we're working through, um, these map updates for the zoning map to align with. as we're working through these map updates for the zoning map to align with the comprehensive plan. So they're, they're doing a lot of work, a lot of good conversation, and I'm hoping we'll make strides in making these changes in the near future. That's all I have for committee updates. Correspondence, Ann, do you want to start off?
Sure. I also attended the DM, the Dry Mill Schoolhouse open, open house earlier this month. That was great to see, I hadn't been in there before, it was great to see all the improvements and the exciting plans that they have for, for, you know, programming and activities. Resident of Waymouth Road reached out regarding posting Waymouth Road against heavy trucks, the way that we've done on, on short mail and short shaker roads. I explored this with town staff and was advised that this is really not possible. Unfortunately, there's, there's no easy alternative for heavy vehicle operators to take that would, wouldn't cost them, you know, significant time. And, and the available alternative, which would be mail road, probably the closest option, is also residential street. So it would just sort of like, take the problem from one, you know, road and put it onto another, but at least there are other commercial activities on, on Waymouth Road. At the invitation of local business owner Scott Liberty, I met with him at the property he owns on, on Route one hundred, the former Sears Auction House. He has concerns about zoning that affects his use of that building, and we talked about that. Rachel Lynn Rumson reached out to me in my capacity as liaison to the Resiliency Committee to ask if the town has an inventory of culverts and bridges on hand, and if there's a scorecard for different severe flooding scenarios. And I, Tim Estes is checking on the existence of an inventory, but in general, Tim advises that he thinks the town of Gray has done a really good job of preventive maintenance at its culverts over the last twenty-five years, and we've seen minimal flooding on our public roads. Rachel reminds me that there are still some issues on private roads, and we might want to be thinking about that as we've seen these really heavy rain events this summer. Somehow, working with those private road associations to advise them on, you know, upgrading their culverts or, or other solutions that they could find to, to reduce flooding. And I just want to add my thanks to Lucy Anderson and Lisa Gilmore too, and their, and all the volunteers work at the Blueberry Fest. It really was an amazing event, and I have to say, every time I looked up, Mo Russo was dragging a bag of trash around or something. And he just, he was everywhere, troubleshooting and taking care of stuff. So I met this one man who said he lived down the street from town office, and he, he grew up in Gray and had never been to the Blueberry Fest before, and was, he was super impressed. So just, what a great event that was, thank you so much.
Dan?
That's a hard act to follow. But I'll second what you said. It is, I think, a very bright star in the happenings that go on here in town, and all of the volunteers that put their effort into it, it's greatly appreciated. It just shows that different people with different skill sets can come together and, and get some pretty amazing things done. I only had one conversation, I had a phone conversation with Tim Wilkinson about the A D U ordinance. He was talking to me about how, as a contractor, they work, you know, basically on a grid system is the best way to put it. They use sheet goods, most things are four-by-eight. Our seven-hundred-and-fifty square foot limit is eighteen feet short of what would be a easy-to-build.
How interesting.
Unit. Based on my conversation with Tim, so I think, you know, obviously, we're going to have multiple bites at the A D U apple, so there'll be an opportunity to do that. But it was interesting, I think, you know, that's the value of having these conversations and communications, because people bring their expertise to the conversation. And, you know, the, I don't think anyone would have objected to making the, the outside square footage seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight square feet instead of seven-hundred-and-fifty. So there'll be an opportunity, I think, to make those changes, but it was a good conversation, I appreciate his call, and I appreciate the call of anybody who gets in touch with me for stuff like that, because I always find it helpful.
Thanks, Dan. Marty?
I have nothing.
Matthew?
Well, I also met with Scott Liberty at his self-storage facility. And he had, yeah, he, he also shared with me concerns about a proposed development next to him, and he presented me with some reports about, because he, I guess he had an option on it, and he had some wetland investigation done. And I think he shared it with the planning office, but he shared it with me, a copy of the report, and copies for the council. I mean, I accepted them, but I'm not sure exactly how you, what's appropriate for me to do, you know, should I? It, it seemed almost, you know, like something we wouldn't, as a council, want to get involved with, but I don't know. And I, I accepted the copies, I haven't given them to you, I sort of wanted to consult with the council to see if, if I should distribute the reports to you. I mean, it basically showing that there's rental pools on this property next to him, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know, Nate, do you have a suggestion for, is, I don't know if the appropriate, I haven't seen the documents.
I guess I would say you could leave them, and if anybody wants to take one, they can take one, and then I would be happy to take one and follow up with the planning staff.
Okay, alright, I don't have them with me tonight, unfortunately, but I will, I will do that.
And sharing information is a rule, we may, we may not have any part to play in the decision-making process.
Yeah, okay. I just wasn't sure how to, how to deal with that. Also, I attended the Blueberry Festival and helped out for a little while, and, sorry, I meant to make it to the volunteer awards, but it didn't happen.
No, that's okay, we recovered.
I didn't think my presence was critical to it going forward, so, yeah, it was, it was a fabulous event, and I went last year, and I was really amazed at how good it was, so.
Yeah, good.
So my thanks to all the organizers and volunteers.
So I had several emails from different residents regarding their desire to see us take up a mooring ordinance. I know Nate, you had replied to at least one of them, I, I guess I, I'm looking for, I, I think on our task list, it was not a high priority, because we were waiting for input from the state rulemaking happen, if they would create any laws in support of that. We have had feedback from our planning staff that it's a very cumbersome thing to enforce, and that if we were to have such an ordinance, we probably would need to fund somebody who is dedicated to going out and enforcing any kind of mooring ordinance we had. So I'm just raising these as points for conversation, and we don't need to talk about it right now, but I have been getting a lot of emails about it, so I, we probably should at least address people's concerns and give them kind of a, I don't know if we, we will have a timeline, maybe our decision is to leave it the way it is, but we should, we should probably talk about it at a workshop, at least. Also, I attended the Blueberry Festival, which I mentioned earlier, and then Nate and I both had an email from Christina Egan at GP COG inviting the town, it's on your packet, packet page thirty-nine, inviting some representatives of Gray to join a regional meeting with other like towns around us, New Gloucester, Durham, Powell, North Yarmouth, and Cumberland County Government. Just to kind of, you know, share our thoughts about what's, what we're all working on, see if there's any opportunities to work together, talking about challenges. They held a similar meeting to this in the spring of this year, but for the more rural lake communities in their member, in their member, for their member communities, it was Naples, Bridgeton, Sebago, Casco. When we talked about it at the executive committee at the time, I actually inquired with Christina about creating one that was more appropriate for Gray, because we don't fit in with the metro compact either, which is, you know, Portland and Falmouth and South Portland. So I feel like we're sort of in this in-between place of not being rural enough, but not being metropolitan enough, and I think it would be beneficial to have these opportunities to talk with like-sized towns around us, so. So anyway, the meeting is scheduled for October eighteenth, Wednesday, from six to seven, at this, at our town hall here, and they're serving dinner, but they would need to know if, who's going. I would assume, Nate, that more than three of us cannot attend, or more than two of us cannot attend.
That's correct, unless you want to post it as a public meeting.
Right. I, I would like to go as a member of the GP COG Executive Committee, but would anyone else like to attend this meeting?
As an alternate, I'd kind of like to go, since I'm the alternate for you.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I thought I was the alternate.
No, well, there's, there's two, so there's two delegates and then an alternate, which I think you're the alternate, Dan's the other.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, if you want.
No, no, if you're, if you're the, if you're a delegate, then.
Okay, it sounds, Dan, you can come, and that sounds good. So we should just let Christina know, I don't know if there was a R S V P date here.
Matthew can be backup if something.
Yeah.
I'm the alternate.
Right, you're the alternate, there you go.
Doesn't need to hit her.
I just want to make sure I'm, yeah, I can, no, I can go, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, Nate, do you want me to reply to Christina?
If you don't want.
Yeah.
Will you see, use R S V P for both of us, or, okay, just copy me on that?
Yep. And that was all I had for correspondence and activities. So I am looking for a motion to adjourn at nine-eleven P M.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so good night, everyone.
Yes, thanks and good night.